Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bel Air Beach City Council meeting for Monday, March 1st, 2021. Ladies and gentlemen, before we rise, I would like you to join me in a moment of silence. Something happened on February 17th, 2021 that has never happened in over 100 years. And one of the brave deputies in the Pinellas Sheriff's Department was killed in the line of duty. He was killed while a drunk driver was attempting to elude him allegedly, and they ran him right over and killed him. And he leaves a wife and two young daughters. His name was Michael J. Nagley, and I don't ever want to forget that name. That man was a hero. He died protecting us. So please join me in a moment of silence for him, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mark Beam. Thank you. Mark, if you may. Please draw your name and pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the government, to the citizens, 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 to the citizens. County Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robin Aki, Councilmember Mark Beam, Councilmember Dave Gaddis, Councilmember Jody Shirley, Councilmember Weeta Swope, Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn, Mayor Joseph Manzo, City Manager Lynn Reeves, and City Attorney Fred Riley.
First item of business is to approve the agenda. The agenda has been published. Do I have a motion for that? Glenn makes the motion. Second by Mark Beam. All, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero, the agenda is approved. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have citizen comments. The citizen comments will be for any item that's not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, at the appropriate time, I'll ask for citizen comments on that item only. So these are of a general nature. Should you wish to address the council, please come up here to the podium, state your name and address, and talk to us. Tell us what's on your mind. I just ask that you maintain the code of conduct, speak respectfully, and everybody's going to have a good time. So with that, I open up the floor to citizen comments. Would anyone like to address the council? I see no hands. Are closed citizen comments. Next, we have the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Officer, we have deputy here? Yes. So we have the presentation by the Pinellas Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. Good evening back to you guys. Welcome to the new year. We're looking at January stats. For the month of January, we did have three crimes that hit the first page here. The first was assault. That was actually domestic-related, a domestic-related case, a thing that hooks out. There was one residential burglary, and the larceny was a case where there was a contractor took money into a job and didn't pull through on that contract. So that was the larceny when we're looking at that. There were three arrests the month of January in the city. The domestic battery, I previously mentioned, a warrant arrest, and a plea to elude, which actually began in Bel Air Bluffs. The citizen fled from there. They were stopped here in Bel Air Beach. So that wasn't actually a Bel Air Beach case per se, but they were arrested here in the city. There were a majority of the activity we had this month was, once again, self-initiated by our deputies, 155 direct patrols, 111 traffic stops, 105 house checks, 54 ordinance violations, 31 contacts, and 14 area checks. Leave the list on that. So a pretty good month there. We had two traffic crashes, and there were 96 citations issued in the city this month. Any questions for the council?
Sheriff, I have a couple of questions. One thing, the sheriff issues each week, anyone in this county can get it, to sign up for it, a list of crimes in the neighborhoods. And it's not on here, but I've noticed recently a lot, like three or four of frauds in this city. Fraudulent activity seems to be up around, I'm not going to say what it's around, it's up there, it's in the city, okay? Do you have any information on that that we could give to the citizens? Because I've noticed a lot of it.
Well, I did look, I have looked in the past month. There were no major crimes in the month of February. However, there were two cases where there was, where some folks had possible identity theft. And that's the cases, I think, that's not cases where they knew the person, they just had accounts open in their name. And so they report, there are two cases up above, I believe Tiffany Drive, where citizens reported that, you know, someone opened accounts in their name, or they got unsolicited credit cards mailed, things like that. So that's what those cases were.
So it's not a door-to-door thing, this is more cybercrime type thing.
Correct.
Second thing I have for you is the beach access points. It's that time of year again, there's increased traffic there. I was there Friday, and it was disgusting.
Where was that Friday? I didn't hear you.
I was there last Friday, and it was disgusting.
Say, where, where?
I was on Sixth Street.
Oh, Sixth, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
On Sixth Street?
Yeah, I've heard that it was on the other ones, too. I've heard of other people in the city. Just wondering, have we increased our patrols? Going to increase the patrols. And what we're seeing is the same old, same old, people without stickers, they're using the beach. So they're not only illegally parked, they're actually trespassing on those lots. And then to boot, there's dogs, there was hoverboards, I mean, there was a guy with boombox that you could have heard from 100 yards away, which, you know, it just annoys the people in Bel Air Shore, and that makes for bad relations. So are we doing anything about this?
I know that we've had some turnover, you know, in January, we had our shift change. We had some turnovers in deputies, we have newer deputies out here. So all the other supervisors know that we're seeing an increase in that, so that we can increase the patrols. But I know our deputy here on our ship, I know the day shift deputy also changed, Deputy Lang went down to Indian Rock Beach, so getting deputy there. So it's possible that there's been less enforcement because of newer deputies not understanding the rules there, so we'll make sure they get taken care of.
It's the weekends, and it's sunset. Sunset is just a massive influx of people. And unfortunately, these are the people that cause issues when they, you know, they sit on the retaining walls, they're not from here. Most of them are not from here, and they don't care. So they come there, they might be here temporarily, you know, unfortunately, it makes for very bad relations.
Yeah, so illegally parking in your parking zone there.
Illegally parking and, you know, everything that goes with it, yeah.
Right. So, yeah, I'll talk to the other supervisors, and we'll put an increased patrol on that, okay?
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Anyone from the city, any questions? Thank you, deputy.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
See, the auditors are here, and item number four is consideration of accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending September 30th, 2019. We have a presentation by Junie Bittenger of Salt Marsh, Cleveland, and Dunn, certified public accountants. With that, turn the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with me is Richard Christie, also from Salt Marsh, Cleveland, and Dunn. Happy to give a very good report, especially considering the year we've had, the pandemic. The city made out very well that we, starting on page three, is the audit report letter. This is what is known as an unqualified opinion, the highest opinion that can be rendered. I encourage everyone to look at, review the management discussion analysis, which is actually written by the city treasurer and staff, and reviewed by Lynn Reeves. And they do an excellent job of making comparisons between 2019 and 2020. And we give you a lot of valuable information in that part of the paper. But just to look briefly at some numbers, page 15, this is on a whole pool basis, governmental activities, different investment activities. You can see there was an increase this year, which is, it's always excellent, again, this is on a whole pool basis, knowing this has capital assets and all marked debt in these statements. And looking at pages 16 and 17, this shows you what makes up those changes. Looking at our bottom line, if you will, the change in net position, which is, if you look at page 17, we had an increase, which is excellent, $425,530, knowing that's actually after depreciation and all expenses. And then on our business-type activities, which is our revenue fund, $28,735. So it was a very, very strong year. Looking directly to your attention on a few of the statements, and then if anybody has any questions, we'd have to go with that as well. Page 20 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And this is on our modified bill, which is really how you run the city. Looking at this, we had an increase after transfers in the general fund of $532,912. And there was a decrease in capital projects, but actually, we'll look at the actual real quickly, and actually, that decrease was planned for, and less than what we thought it would be again, because a lot of the capital projects, as you know, have been underway. Look real quick at your budget actual, which is on page 22, in the general fund, and showing how well this council budgeted. Past quick budget, we came extremely close to making it, and actually, it was a conservative budget. You can see in the far-right column that your variances were favorable. You actually took in more in revenue than you expected, so you got $178,000 in revenues surplus as far as beyond the budget, and your expenditures were $88,000 less than what you budgeted. So again, it was a strong, strong year, especially considering everything that's happened. There were kind of pluses and minuses from different grounds, like parking, there was one, a good example of something that has really gone higher than what was anticipated. Obviously, nobody expected that we have as many people at the beach. And also, parking for this, I mean, building for this, excuse me, were much higher than what was anticipated. I'm not going to read to you all the notes. We'll look at page 37, is your long-term debt. Can you see we're paying the debt according to schedule? And so, look at our revenue notes increasing, our revenue bond decreasing, which is obviously primarily being paid for by those assessments anyway, but not that annual assessments. So you can see our debt has decreased. So we look at, the other thing I wanted to draw your attention to is, I'd encourage you to look at some of the statistical section in that, because that issue is trending over time. You can see, starting with page 75, you can see the difference in the assessed value and actual value of property over the last 10 years, so you can get an idea of where we come from, where we're going. And the statistical section is all in a 10-year mode. Is there anything else anyone would like to go over further this time?
I have a quest, if you would, and then I think you could actually probably roll my question into that. I am a CPA, so I know what you meant when you said unqualified opinion, but if you could just let everyone know what that actually means. And my question, and I think you could roll in there, is this council, about a year and a half ago, actually made the switch from an in-house financial person to sending it to the outside.
Yes.
And I wanted to know, in your opinion, how you see these books, because it's our impression that everything looked real good and was being done real well. But as professionals who come in and audit it, I was wondering what your opinion, not on the books themselves, but just the quality of the work that we're seeing and what you're seeing.
Oh, the quality of the work is definitely, to start out with the first question, this, as I said, the highest opinion that can be rendered. So yes, so within all material respects, your financial statements are clearly stated, which is what that actually means, as you know, Mr. Mayor. As far as the quality of the work, they do an excellent job. They're very well-prepared for the audit. They are very good at reviewing the caper after I start the draft. So, yeah, the quality of the work is outstanding. I'm actually somewhat amazed myself that they do it in such a short amount of time, and for a very, as you know, very, very useful fee.
You save considerable money by doing that, and it's great to hear what you just said.
They are both CPAs, they both take continuing education, because we even talked about that. Like, they take a lot of the same continuing education that Richard reminded me, to remain qualified. So they could actually continue to be governmental auditors until they decided to switch to the other side, which is good for you, that they're in-house instead.
Excellent. What?
Yes, sir.
You said the expenditures were $88,000 lower than budgeted?
Yes.
Well, did we save money on projects, or did we forego some projects? No, we, you know, the staff, knowing that, because I told them earlier in the year that there's a possibility we're going to take in less revenue, and kind of, for us, it worked out better. So, you know, I told the staff not to spend money if we didn't need it. And so that's, that's part of it. So that's a credit to the staff, you know, especially the public works guys and stuff. You know, they, they made something stretchable, furniture that they needed to, a piece of equipment or tools or what have you, that we would normally buy, or they did stuff themselves in-house. We're not kicking cans down the road now.
Mr. Reeves, it's not only a credit to the staff, it's a credit to you. Excellent job. Excellent job. Anyone else? Citizens, I'm going to open up to the citizens. We normally don't allow you to talk from your seat, but it's hopefully inconvenient to come up here, so if you could just, if you have a question, shout it out, and she can hear you and get you the answer. Anyone have any questions as a citizen? John Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, please remind everybody to please scoot directly into the microphone.
Yes.
I'm sitting over a vent, and I'm sure others are hearing the same thing, but I'm having difficulty hearing, as I'm sure others are. Thank you.
I'll make the note. Folks, this is the way you got to do it. I'm an inch from the mic, so that's the only way it works. These mics, as soon as you pulled it up like this, you can't hear it, okay? So it's just the mic, it's not you. And these masks don't make it any better, so. Anyone else have any questions on the audit and on the accounting? I want to thank you. You did a wonderful job again, as always, and it's a pleasure having you as our auditors, and great job, and we'll see you again next year.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
We might need a break while we figure out why Dave's phone's not working.
Oh, sure. You need five minutes?
Oh. He's got the microphone.
Oh, he's got the new technology.
I'm beginning to hear the noise.
Good. Working? All right. Okay. Item five is planning and zoning toward code review progress report. I see Wanda Schrader. Miss Schrader?
I'm going to make it easier for me to view. Okay. Chair, in filled last week to make the presentation for this month's planning and zoning board meeting code review. I know we had promised last month that we would have the final report for you this month, but the last two chapters that we reviewed were chapter 30, which is marine structures, and chapter 94, which was zoning. They were both very long chapters. We had a lot of discussion, and had a lot of questions coming out of it, decided we needed one more meeting for ourselves to close, basically for closure, to review the report before we delivered it. So we will be writing the report, and we have a meeting scheduled later this month. I forget the date on plan, for the committee to review the final report. We will have it for you next month. But we did, we did complete all of the chapters, and we're wrapping up now.
That's all I was just going to ask. Everything overall is going well, or is nothing that's holding you up? It's just that it was more complicated?
Nothing really holding us up. I, we had a lot of help from the city manager and from Laura. Got a lot of our questions answered on the spot. Probably picked a bunch of stuff over to the attorney, because we had a lot of questions about, can you do this? How should we do this? How should we word that? So that's the kinds of things that we spent a lot of time on, and should be a good report by the time we did that.
I don't think anyone here will have a problem that this is delayed a month for these reasons, right? If you don't, you'll just thank everyone on board for the hard work, and we'll look forward to the report next month. Just hang on one second, we'll see if there's any comments from council or citizens. Council? No? Citizens, any comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into the regular agenda, and the first item is the item number seven to...
Mayor?
I'm sorry, consent agenda first. Item six, let's skip one. So we have the consent agenda approval of the February 1st, 2021 city council meeting minutes. The consent agenda does not get discussed, it was not moved into regular. So we have a motion to approve the minutes. So I'm going to, Mark Beam makes the motion. Second by you. You guess? Okay. We take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero, consent agenda is approved. Now we move to the regular agenda. So the first thing is the authorization toward bid B2101, community center CCTV and access control system. The description is a contract with integrated security consultants in the amount of $14,203.20. So I have a motion first. Let's vote makes the motion. Second by Mark Beam. We just hope to stink.
I'm going to defer to the city manager. This is...
Correct.
Correct.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is, we sent the security cameras and door accesses out for a bid, and we got two bids back. There's a copy in your packet, one from Ato Solutions, in the amount of $17,866.07. And the low bidder was Integrated Security Consultants in the amount of $14,203.20. We did check their references, and the reference check was good. There's a copy of the proposed location of the cameras and things in the pack up for you to review, and we're recommending that you organize it to Integrated Security Consultants.
When would they start this?
I would say, after the council approves it, we'll probably do a purchase order, and within a couple of weeks, we'll have a, you know, if you want to know the exact...
No, just the process.
Yeah.
Council, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, there you go.
Mr. Hanson, can you hear me? Basically, the only thing that I'm wondering about on this is the brand high vision. I don't know if this poses a problem or not, but I would like to find out, if we approve it today, I would like my vote to be contingent on that it's okay to use high vision cameras and CCTV equipment, because there have been some security issues with several Chinese firms, and they're on a named list. So I don't know what implications that has for us, but it's something that we probably need to look into.
I've heard everything you said. The only thing I have a problem with is, I don't know that we can make votes contingent. We could give the city manager the authorization to proceed, or we could give him the authorization to proceed and come back to us, but we have to give them action, item one. So yes, I hear what you're saying, and that's a big, that's a big concern, with what you're, you know, if you're even, if it's even close to right, it's a big concern, so we don't want to do it. Mr. Reeves, do you know anything about what Mr. Gas is talking about?
We, we went back to, before we even put this out to bid, we'd spoken several times with Ato Solution, and they actually, they used, they were using another camera, and then they came back and said, we're not using that camera any longer. So this was in Cow's research, and the recommendation that they gave us from a non-bidding standpoint was to, this was the best camera to utilize for what we were looking for.
I have to go again, it's a second.
I understand where Mr. Gas is going, and it kind of goes back to my previous concerns about the city writing contracts and ensuring that they're enforceable, we have warranties, guarantees of performance, and so I assume that we'll redo that at a later date to make sure that you meet Mr. Gas.
Well, the bid document has a contract in it, it's a standard city contract with timelines of when they have to finish and start. All of that's, that's in all our bids. So that, that information that you're asking about, there's a warranty, there's this, there's that in there. So I guess what I probably would need to know is really what Commissioner Gas is concerned about.
Basically, and this has just been called my exception, just in the last few days, we have to do government contracts, and, or we have in the past, and we have to be, basically, we're audited every so often. The last audit, they wanted to know if we had high vision equipment on our side. And I don't know if that was a disqualifying factor or not, but it raised some concern, and I'm sorry I didn't find out about this sooner, but this literally just came up. So if the federal government is concerned with it, I would like to know why. As much as I want to approve this and get this going, because I know it's imperative, I would like to table this and come back to it, maybe with a 10-minute special session once we get past whether we can use this equipment.
What we could do, we have the next meeting that we have, really, this is the last business meeting for this council, but we do have a brief meeting right before the installation. That is a meeting, and there is no reason why we can't pass business unless, tell me, I'm looking deliveries and daddy gentry. As far as I know, there's no reason we can't pass business at that point. These folks are, this council is still intact up until the swearing-in of any new people, correct?
Yes, prior to the special...
Prior to the installation.
Right. Do you think, Mr. Reeves, you'd be able to get an answer from Mr. Gas, so we could take this as business that day?
I'll call the, we'll call the contractor in the morning and find out.
I don't think the contractor's going to have this information. This is my fear, is that we may need federal assistance for something, and we may be disqualified because we're using equipment they don't approve of. And so just to make sure that we're okay before we actually go through and approve this, I want to take a second.
Make a motion.
What you're saying, Dave, is because we, first of all, we're not, for the security grants, we're not getting federal assistance, but for the door...
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't know, but it wouldn't be the installer, it would be the manufacturer of the equipment, which is hot off of the...
Right. So we'll find out through the, through the law enforcement, because that's where the grant for the part of this is coming from, if that is an issue. But I will say, this company actually, in the, forgive, coke and in a prison, they're using this stuff, so I need to...
I feel, I feel good about it. I just want to, I just want to double check.
Okay. Yeah, I'll find out from the grant people that ideally if they will reimburse it with high vision.
Can I just add that I think when we're buying things, we maybe should spec US-made, you know, American-made items. It would probably be beneficial to support our local, local... It would be beneficial to support our, you know, local businesses, and I think we should spec US-made products. And I'm looking online, there are several camera manufacturers that are made, cameras that are made in America.
The point I was trying to make is, our traditional boilerplates and our contracts haven't been satisfactory to this point. At the last meeting, I said we've had issues with quality and performance and no accountability, and that's why I'm raising this issue again. And maybe if we can't necessarily specify the equipment, we may want to specify performance or specifications that we want to meet. And Dave may be more qualified and have a lot more expertise in that area, so maybe just reviewing the specifications in the contract, rather than specific name brands or whatever. That's where I was trying to go, is the standard boilerplate to this point just hasn't been satisfactory to my opinion, and I just want to make sure that maybe we start tightening up some of those areas, and this might be one of those good areas.
Yeah, originally, this was going to be Bosch cameras, and Commissioner Gaddis did look at that with us, but then the vendors, I don't know what happened, but they put that Bosch camera there. So we'll find that out.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, but basically, there's only a few companies in the entire world that make cameras. And no matter who's you buy, and whether it's, they claim they're here, or they're rare, or they're made by a lot of different companies, and there's a, there's a list of like four that are on that list. So I just need a little bit of time, and I'll get with Lynn, and we'll...
Do your motion. Make it.
Motion to table?
Yes. Do you have a second? Second. Do you have a second? There's one discussion. I'll take it by voice. All in favor of tabling this hopefully for the next meeting, and if not, then Mr. Reeves will come in on the next council, that's fine. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero, this is tabled. And Mr. Reeves, I agree with what Mr. Gunn said, if you want to work directly with Dave Gaddis, maybe he can get any questions in, so that the next time we meet, hopefully, he's, if he's comfortable, I think we're probably going to be comfortable on this one. Yeah, and again, I apologize, but basically, there's only a few companies in the entire world that make cameras. And no matter who's you buy, whether it's, they claim they're here, or they're rare, or they're made by a lot of different companies, and there's a, there's a list of like four that are, that are on that list. So I just need a little bit of time and I'll get with Lynn and whoever.
Do your motion, make it.
Motion to table?
Yes, do you have a second? Second. We have a discussion on any of the current vote. I'll take it by voice, all in favor of table in this hopefully for the next meeting, and if not, then Mr. Reeves will come in on the next council, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero, this is tabled. And Mr. Reeves, I agree with what Mr. Gunn said, if he wants to work directly with Dave Gaddis, maybe he can get any questions in, so that the next time we meet, hopefully, he's, if he's comfortable, I think we're probably going to be comfortable on this one. Let's move on to item eight, authorization to award bid B twenty-one zero-two monument sign with electronic message display and budget amendment increase in the capital projects fund. The explanation is contract with international sign company amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, plus a contingency of five thousand, twenty-seven dollars, seventy cents. This has been placed on by the city manager, do we have a motion? So if he makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis, it's open for discussion on Mark Bean.
I refer those to Limerick City Manager.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, Mayor, council, actually, I was disappointed in the bid, and, and I have to put this on here, so what I'm going to recommend to you is you reject the bid, because I think the, the cost is too high. And we, we kind of got a rough data from the survey that we sent out, and out of three hundred and twenty-one people that submitted information, only twenty-six of them were concerned about the message board. And Patty got this to me, well, we knew the number, I think, Friday, but, so, the question at this point is, because we had a bid, the council needs to reject it, and we'll go on from there and figure out what you want to go forward. I did, based on the survey, the communication survey, I'm kind of, and I stuck this picture at your dais, I'm kind of to the point where maybe we just use something similar to our enter signs, because evidently, the people that called concerning that they can't read the board, didn't really speak up that they, that we needed a message board in the communication survey. The majority of the people want us to communicate with them through, of the three hundred and twenty-one, two hundred and eighty-plus want email, one hundred and fifty-five, which is, some of them are both of these things, want text messages, forty-four want voicemail, sixty-six said the website. And the one that really shocked me, eighteen said Facebook, which really shocked me, because I thought the whole world was Facebooked out. And eighty newsletters and twenty-six message boards. So my recommendation at this point is, maybe we go back to the drawing board, we'll have a discussion, maybe at a work session, to see if you just want a monument sign or what you really want. I think it's too much money, just my opinion.
I think this is the first time in the history that you've ever recommended against something that you put on, but I have to agree with you, I think everybody else is probably going to agree, but I think, you know, my inbox blew up with this whole digital sign thing. I was never really so, you know, too behind this thing, but it looked like it was going to be the better of the two when it came to cost. This thing came in and blew it out of the water, but Lynn and I had a nice long discussion about it a couple of weeks ago, and I said, "Lynn, has anybody actually missed the sign that's down?" He said, "No." So I said, "If no one's missing it, then maybe we don't need to do this, and maybe we just have a welcome to this." I think we should have something that says maybe welcome to Bel Air Beach, but we don't have to go crazy.
Well, I think you need to have a, something to say what this building is, you know, so as an example, this is what, we, we did the same sign at the marina, and it basically, below it, it says marina. So if you wanted something else to add to it, but that's, that's a concept. We had those redone. I can't tell you the exact price, because it's been a couple, three years ago when we had those done. But just a thought.
Counsel?
Yes, I would like to say, first off, I appreciate the city reaching out to the citizens. That was a very good way, because we have been trying to push reaching out to our citizens to get their feedback. I don't have any kind of problem at all with something like this, just something simple in identifying the building. So I'm with you on rejecting the bid, but I do want to make sure, I think, both to be clear, or if I'm going to have communications with the community.
I'm in agreement with rejecting the bid. I would just throw out, though, that the survey results that you're referring to was the broad survey that went out, how do you want to be communicated with? So it wasn't specific to a digital sign, it was included email, text messaging, and so it wasn't a narrow focus group, so I'll just throw that out there. I, I do believe that there may be something simpler that, that does the job. So I agree with going back to the drawing board. I would also like to say that the digital sign was a recommendation of the communications ad hoc committee, which was basically comprised of the residents, right? Am I correcting that? So there was good representation of the residents on the communications ad hoc committee, and that was a recommendation of the communications committee. So while we may not need something as elegant as we originally worked with, this may be the opportunity to go back to the drawing board, come up with a, a solution.
You know, I've got something in the mail, I'm, I'm going to give it to you, actually, it was sent to me, it's just an advertisement, I don't know if people can see it, but it's a, it's a small digital sign, it's nothing fancy, it's not even close to what we were looking at when we were, you know, with this other sign. Something that's portable. They're four thousand dollars apiece, so, you know, you can get a couple of these and place them in an event of an emergency or something that's really important around the city, and take them down if necessary. Again, it's not sexy, it's not real fancy, but it's four thousand dollars. And on the backside of it, on the other thing that they sent me, they have an email program that can keep everybody advised of what's going on for three hundred and forty-nine dollars a year. So, I mean, I think that dovetails into what the communications committee, some of the recommendations they made, it's twenty-first century, I think it's a nice alternative, so I'm going to, I'm going to vote against your, you know, vote against the sign, and I'm going to give you this. Anybody else?
No, the other thing, I would say, if we do a sign like Lynn has, got us a picture of us, have a necessary electric in place, so that if we want to do something later on, it'd be easy to do. If you want to just raise it up a little bit, maybe put a smaller sign underneath it, or just digital, or something, something up there, like in, same emergency, if you've got a hurricane coming up, evacuate to say, something in that. In case there is no communications, you never know. That's all.
Anyone? Lynn?
I just thought of two other things. One is, there's not a lot of corporate history remaining on this council, but historically, when you try to tie this sign to the previous uproar over a digital sign, where I would like to remind everybody is, that the, the previous concern centered around a different location for the sign, and secondly, the county wanted to install a digital sign over Gulf Boulevard in the Bel Air Beach area, that's similar to the ones on Almerton and East Bay that warns about amber and silver alerts, and there was a lot of uproar over that. So that's, that's number one. You know, a lot of people don't remember that that was what the uproar was really about. And the second thing is, a lot of people are, are just concerned about the change and probably haven't even seen the, the design, because I had to dig on our website and had to actually go into the bid to find what the concept looked like, because I don't think we ever posted a concept, sign, picture, artist rendition, or anything. So I'm not quite sure what people are having in their minds when they totally reject the images. That's, that's a concern I have also.
Dave?
Before I, I became a council member, that sign up front was, that was my communication tool. Every time I got in my car and drove across this parade, I read that sign. I knew when every meeting was, I knew what was going on. That, that was my number one communication tool. And I, I do understand that many people don't want a digital sign, and I certainly understand why fifty-five thousand dollars is too much. However, I want our sign back, and I don't think that I'm the only person in the city who does. I think that many people miss this sign. You could probably survey everyone in this room and probably come up with better numbers than what, what Lynn gave us in the survey, because what's your number one communication tool in a survey? What, how would you like to be reached out to? Well, yeah, okay, the sign's going to be there anyway. But while you're at it, can I have Facebook, or email, or something like that? I, I think the sign was taken for granted, and now that it's gone, I know I'm not the only person in the city who misses it. And even though it, it wasn't flashy and digital and easy to program, I think it's something that we absolutely must have back in some form.
Anyone else want to speak on that?
Yeah, I would just say that I think the price was sticker shock. I, from the beginning, wasn't a big fan of the huge digital sign, but I think there's a modification between what, what we had bid and what we have marking the city elsewhere. So I would say, maybe we can go back to the drawing board and look for something that's maybe a fraction of the size of this. This seems to be a pretty big sign. Again, go back to where we talked about, maybe doing some information, or only on the bottom, running information, rather than this digital, you know, medium that's off to the, the right, as, you know, we see it here, and maybe just go back to the drawing board with it. But certainly fifty-five thousand dollars is not, isn't why we move forward with this. We were in the thirty thousand price range, so somewhere in between, there's got to be a number we can settle on and circulate it to residents a little better, because I thought the same thing when I started getting emails, it would be nice to shoot back, here's what we're looking at, you know, potentially improving. I don't know how many residents have seen this image. Of course, this is a little bit, you know, this seems a little overwhelming, so I think we get a better image, we get, we modify it some, we get the price down, and circulate that to residents, so they know what the possibilities are.
I just want everyone to understand, too, I remember Jamie's quote vividly, and we all shared in this quote, Jody held up that sign, okay, that was our alternative, that really nice one, and we said, "We wanted that one for the price of the basic sign." That was the charge that we gave to the city manager. It's not his fault, I mean, that, that is by far and away the nicest sign that was there. We thought it fit in well with the, you know, with the architecture of the building, so what we were looking at, and then we were just debating whether it should be digital or regular. So this is not a failure by anyone's part, it's just it costs more to get the Cadillac than, you know, it costs for the basic Toyota. So at this point, we're back to the drawing board. I know there's probably some people that want to speak, I mean, it, it looks pretty obvious that this is not going to get through tonight, it's going to get rejected, but if you come out to speak tonight as a citizen, this, you know, you've come here, you've spent your time, I think the council would like to hear, you know, any ideas that you might have here, and we can, we have some time, this agenda's not that large tonight, so I want to open this up to the floor, if there's any other council problems.
I just said one thing.
Yes.
I agree with Jody about gain more information of the citizens once we come up on a concept, but a lot of these digital signs also have like a, a night mode, where it's not as bright, where it's not as glaring, because I think some of the perception is it's going to be like, just ridiculously obnoxious for everybody, not only people that live nearby, but just driving in the city or to get hit with a bunch of colored lights. So a lot of them have like a, a low light kind of setting, where it's just very subtle, and I think we need to get that kind of information out, because I think everyone thinks this is an obnoxious marquee, and that's not any of our attention. It's supposed to be subtle, you know, good taste, you know, and present a nice image for the city upon entering.
Anyone else in council? I'm going to open this up to the other citizens.
I don't know if they have.
Jody has a really nice rendering of it. Can you see that? Jody, would you mind helping us? Yeah, sure, absolutely, but Jody has a really nice one here, nice, full-size one. I don't know if everyone's seen the sign, so.
Pass it around.
Yeah, you can pass it around. Vice Mayor Gunn has something to say.
I'll pass it, this is the actual, our technical involvement, this is coming out of the city. I don't think we have the city.
Okay, with that, and, and in case you didn't come out on the mic, Vice Mayor asked if, you know, this, I want to say there's two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about twelve people in the audience, about half of the people have seen this rendering of the sign that's being passed around now, which is the sign that we were, that was out for bid right now. So again, I'm going to, I know some people may want to, may want to speak on this, we're going to take this back into a work session, but work sessions sometimes are not well-attended with citizens, so if you're here and you want to speak about it, microphone is here, please address us. Anyone? Yes. Right up to that microphone, Mr. Mall.
I'm Roger Mall, one-one-five Cosway, Red Cross Street. I don't need to belabor this, because I ruin all of your, I mean, so I just want to have what's been said. In the last meeting, I apologize, I don't know if you're in the name, but I know that you made a comment stating that you used it for information in the past. And the only other comment I heard that was positive for this sign was from Lynn, when he was, and he said that he would be able to update the sign even from this hotel room, and I thought, well, making, that's not a good reason to be spending that kind of money for a sign. I love you to death, but I, I hate to see this, when we've got over, was it one hundred and fifty, or what was the size of the survey?
Pardon?
What was the size of the survey?
There were three hundred and twenty-one.
So that's three hundred and twenty-one citizens, there's three people on the communications board, and to ignore the citizens, I think is a big mistake. And it sounds like it's going to go down now, but if you're redoing the sign, let's make sure that we just don't want to do another project to be grandiose. And that's the feeling that I get about this sign. And so I would encourage you not to do that. We're a simple community, we're the smallest one around here, and we have the most grandiose structure. We're a fun-friendly community, we don't have to look like Bel Air, California, which incidentally doesn't have a, a, a digital board. And they got a lot more money than we do. And so I would encourage you, when you're in this committee, not to do, to get off this digital thing, because I think everybody's sending the wrong signal of welcome here. Let's listen to that three hundred and fifty-one people. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Any other citizens? Yes.
I'm Debbie Mall, I live at one-one-five Cosway, with my wonderful husband over there. I, too, have some significant concerns about the digital sign, which I have voiced before. And after hearing what you all said tonight, I'm really upset. And I have received emails regarding this digital sign, so I have a significant number of people that I can share with you who are against it. They were against it a couple of years ago, when we talked about putting it at Cosman Park, and we're still against it. The city of Bel Air, Bel Air Bluffs, and Indian Rock Beach do not have one. They are much larger than we are. They have many more events going on that they need to inform their residents of, and certainly, they have many more people to evacuate with hurricanes and things, yet they are able to keep their citizens far better informed than we are. So clearly, the answer is not a digital sign. I have no problem with putting a sign out there that says the city of Bel Air Beach, or Bel Air Beach City Hall. We, I think we should have that, welcome to Bel Air Beach. But this is, a digital message board is a very antiquated means of communicating with, with anybody anymore. It's going to end up being a white elephant out there, you guys. It really is. And who's going to take care of it when we have power failures, or when it malfunctions? Who are we going to, are we going to be able to call Lynn in his hotel room at ten o'clock at night and say, "This thing is going bonkers"? Because that, that's going to be a big issue. So my big concern is that the citizens have spoken now twice. Three hundred and twenty-one people in the survey, Lynn, and I think there were two hundred and ninety-one who said no.
No, no, you're missing-
They didn't, they wanted email. Yeah, they wanted email.
You're, you're missing-
You're missing, all I gave you, we did not send out a thing that said, what do you think about a sign? Now that we have this new list, because our previous list was, I'll say, fifty-plus percent people were not residents of the city of Bel Air Beach. So this is a new list that the communications committee asked us to do a survey on. So I don't want you to say that three hundred and twenty-six, I'm just saying, I'm giving the council information that we had twenty-six people that said they still wanna use the board. That doesn't mean that there's not another hundred out there that wanna use it. It just means that in the communication survey, the people were asked to give us the best way to contact them. So going forward, if we have a new sign, concept, we could send that out in email, because now we have a emailer, text list, that's three hundred and twenty people that are residents of Bel Air Beach, not.
But that's our fault. We don't, we don't keep a decent database. We don't. That's our fault. Now, you did ask in there, a city of Bel Air Beach message board. You're asking people how you want the city of Bel Air Beach to communicate with them. And that would be the purpose of having a digital sign, would be to communicate with the residents of Bel Air Beach. And they're telling you, they don't wanna a message board. So from my perspective, I just find it horrendous that we have spent this much time on something that the citizens have twice said we don't want. This is a pretty darn good response for the city of Bel Air Beach, you have to admit that. I'll be happy to put a database together, I have a pretty significant one already, up for the city of Bel Air Beach. I did it once before for the civic association. We had the civic association, and I gave that to Nancy. So it's not difficult to put a database together of residents here. We can find emails pretty easily. But I would say, I would suggest, before we go out and waste Lynn's time on getting bids and things, let's find out what the citizens wants, because we've asked them twice, and twice they've said no. So I don't know how, I mean, that's, you should've seen the emails that I got over this last, like, week or so, about people saying, I thought this was dead and buried. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Miss Mall. Any other citizens wish to speak on this topic at this time? I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Council, I'm gonna vote for a vote. Just.
I would just say that, once again, if you go out and blanket, do you want a digital sign? What pops into mind? Well, what popped into my mind is driving down East Bay and hitting the Zuri and seeing that Largo sign that blinds me as I drive by, versus getting a concept together and putting that in an email or in a survey and say, this is our idea of what it looks like. Do you agree or don't you agree? And then get a survey. But if you just shotgun an email out there saying, do you want a digital sign? Everybody has a different concept of what's being proposed. And I think the city manager has it right. Let's put together some concept and then survey the populace. And we will certainly tap into your expertise in that list. And we're having problems cracking the communication code here, because people don't want to have their email addresses as a public record. That's the difference between your email list and the email list of Bel Air Beach. As soon as somebody says, here's my text telephone number, here's my email address, it becomes public record. If any vendor outside can purchase that list, and before you know it, your email in baskets slam dunked with advertising and everything else. That's why people don't want to volunteer their communications notification addresses with us. And we're having problems cracking that code. So we have to do it the best way we can and still stay within the constraints of government here and privacy. So I think that's where we're at on this thing.
I agree. This one just kinda went over the top. And it's time to sit back and let's tighten the reins up and see if there's something more appropriate. We're very sensitive to your concerns, and we understand that. And I have the same concerns. I really do. But I think if you want a survey with numbers that they're appropriate, then that's the way to do it. I mean, it's always, what's the number in the denominator? I've looked at some of those emails, and some of those, quite frankly, some of those emails were from people who are not residents of Bel Air Beach. I saw it on Nextdoor, I saw it in some of the other areas on the Facebook page. So, I mean, once again, you can do anything you want, this is the business. So let's just be smart.
I think what's gonna happen, we're gonna take the vote now, but this is gonna wind up going back as, and then, Washington, they call it sending it back to committee. Just gonna go back to committee to a work session. I'm not convinced we need any sign, okay? I'm the first person who gets the email, mayor, 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 and, you know, I didn't get one email saying, hey, I missed the sign. But I got a whole bunch saying, I don't want that digital sign. And I was prepared to vote no on this tonight, no matter what. So I'm not convinced of the digital. I know other people on this council have voiced some reservations. So we're back to committee on this thing, and we have to decide whether we need a city of Bel Air Beach welcome sign, or whether we need this. And everyone's welcome to participate. And I like what Lynn's done in saying, if we have to, let's blast it out to everybody in the city, and then get a good cross-section. But we can't force people to answer those emails either, or letters. So we can only ask. But we appreciate everybody coming by. And I commend everybody who wrote, I don't know what everybody wrote to everyone else, but every letter that I read was very professionally well-done, very respectful. So thank you. But that's what government's supposed to do. If there's no other comments, I'm gonna call the question. Anyone else? So the vote now will be to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order, but I'm sorry, to award bid D twenty.
Mayor, it should be to reject the bid. That's what I need you to do, reject the bid.
Well, you're just not gonna get the votes, don't worry. I got it. So what we're voting for now is to authorize to award bid D twenty-one zero-two, the monument sign with electronic message display and budget amendment increase in the capital projects fund. A yes vote allows the city manager to go purchase this sign, and no vote kills it for now. So, all in favor? I hear nothing. All opposed? Aye? Seven to zero. It fails. Is that good, Mr. Reeves? Okay. Everybody doing okay? We're one hour into our meeting. Anybody need a break? You're good? Okay. Item nine, authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for asphalt overlay and patching services and approval of budget amendment increase. The explanation is to contract with ATX Paving Industries of Florida LLC in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight eighty-one seventy-nine. It was put on by the city manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jody, move it?
Yes, I do.
Yes, okay, your first word.
Okay, well, I'll just defer to Lynn, let him give the explanation.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request to authorize us to execute a purchase order to resurface. There's a map in your packet. It will be Hibiscus, West, or West Hibiscus Harrison, and the section between Gulfport and Hibiscus. We have, we're short about fifteen thousand dollars in the capital budget to do this project. And what I'm asking for is you to authorize the increase of fifteen thousand dollars. This is the same company, it's a contract, already bid out, their term contract with Florida for ATX paving services. And this is a contract we're using currently for the Bellevue Estates Island. So this would be a continuation and utilize the funding and move forward with this project. We did a pavement condition index, if you remember, probably been close to a year ago. And these are the streets that were, got the lowest scores, which means the worst condition. So I'm recommending approval.
Reeves, the ATX paving, they were the ones that I recall last time, they were under the city of Tampa's bid, was that where we got this one from?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been bid, it's just through the city of Tampa, right?
Yeah, it's the city of Tampa contract nineteen C O O O one zero, citywide roadway improvement and resurfacing.
My only question for you is, I noticed some of the streets on here, there was some consideration about doing underground, I know Harrison, we were talking about Hibiscus and stuff like that. And then one rule we had here was kind of an informal rule, but we're not gonna pave streets and then rip them up to do undergrounding. So are we certain at this point that we're ready to pave these streets? Because we're not, two years from now, we don't wanna be tearing up the undergrounding goes.
Well, I don't anticipate, at this point, unless council members surely know something, I don't know. At the current times, there's no movement on undergrounding, on Harrison. I can tell you that. And there never was any movement on Hibiscus or that section to allow to start.
I hate to cross-talk, but Jody, if you don't mind me asking you a question, is that your understanding of this? Because I'm totally in favor of this as long as there's, you know, pretty much the hope of this thing in the near term, you know, is that it's not gonna happen. I don't wanna be tearing up the streets two years from now.
There was a lot of support for it when we asked about it. But when the project was handed off to the residents to take over, there was no movement. So being on council, I didn't wanna be the ones spearheading it. I don't think that's appropriate. It's conflict. So it's just died. And as I explained to the residents that I handed it over, the lines are in their front yard. If it bothers them that bad, they should step up and do something about it. That was probably about eight months ago or more, maybe a year ago I gave them everything, and no one's talked to one about it since. I think there was one phone call and that was it.
Yeah, there it goes. Thank you. No council comments, a little bit of, for the citizens, citizens and comments? There are no citizen comments, but wait, John Hanzick?
In the agenda item, number eight, was just rejected, you have a contingency of five thousand twenty-seven dollars. But in this agenda item we're talking about now, you're asking for a budget amendment increase, but we don't have a dollar amount there. And I heard the city manager say that there is a portion of money in the budget for this project. But I'm concluding from his comments, insufficient funds in the currently approved city budget. So how much more money are we asking for to do this project?
It's fifteen thousand, but I'm gonna turn over the rates.
Yeah, it's a required increase of fifteen thousand dollars, and that's why. It's in the, I spoke about it when I first talked about it, that there's a, would be a budget amendment to the capital projects fund.
It's in his memorandum also, in a book that we have, I'm not sure if it was in the book that was handed out, but it's in the memorandum that he sent us. Mr. Reeves, was that just an underbudgeting or higher cost? What was the why the extra fifteen?
Well, as you know, we did the Bellevue Estates Island, that was the plan. And we were hoping to be able to do it for the balance of the money that we had rolled over, but it came in about eleven thousand dollars more, so that's why. It was just, we were trying to use the funding. We put, I think, sixty thousand dollars a year in asphalt and paving. And we had some rollover and we had saved so we could do the Twenty-second Street Luiza. And when we got those numbers, we still had some money, but we didn't have enough to do it totally, so that's why I'm asking for a budget.
Any other citizen comments? Council? I'll call the question. So item number nine is to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for asphalt overlay and patching services and approval of a budget amendment increase, that's fifteen thousand dollars. This is a contract with ATX Paving of Florida LLC in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight eighty-one seventy-nine. A yes vote passes this and allows the city manager to proceed. I can take voice vote. All in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero. Item ten, authorization to suspend bid requirements for outfall maintenance service. The, again, by the city manager, and a description, this contract with CNM dredging in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. First, do I have a motion? You can vote next to motion. Second, one more, please. Council member, vote.
I'm gonna defer to the city manager.
Lynn Reeves?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is to direct to the stormwater pond that's behind the tennis courts, and to open up the drainage that is across the street through the mangroves. We've got a permit. We did originally look at a contract to do it with Gator Contracting, city of Tampa, and then we got another bid from another vendor. References checked out good, and it was about eight hundred dollars cheaper to use them. And then we also got a bid from the person that's doing the job on Seventh and Eighth Street, and it was seventy-one thousand dollars. This is a small project, it's in the stormwater fund, and this'll help alleviate some of the drainage from palm, cedar and spruce. Right now, the mangroves have overtaken the outlet, and we got a permit to remove them. And we've got that all taken care of. And then we're gonna go across the road to the outfall where the, most of you know where the boardwalk is. We're gonna, there's a section of mangroves that will stay there, but we're also gonna take some mangroves out there and re-dig the trench so the flow goes better out. And that will, the bottom of this pond is probably, well, I know it's up to a boot, it's probably about that deep in muck, so it's time to clean it out. And that'll improve the drainage and also give us more storage basin and better get the drainage out of the area. So I'm recommending using CNM dredging in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Their quotes are in the packet along with the maps of what's being removed and taken from the engineer. And the permit from Swift Mud and the approval from Nell's Gas already been done.
Well, this is our first project under the stormwater, right?
Well, we've started the engineering on Twelfth and Thirteenth Street, so we're moving along.
Lynn, I have only one question. I think you answered, I just wanna be doubly sure, because we're talking about mangroves and they're protected by the National Guard. We're good, right? They're all, we got everybody's permit, the governor, the vice chairman, everybody we need, everyone signed off, right?
Right. We're gonna have to replant some small ones along the bank behind the tennis court. But the main thing is to clean out the flow system. And unfortunately, they should've been maintained a long time ago, and they weren't. And now we've got a kind of a mess out there. So we're gonna fix that. We have all the permits.
This is a project that has been deferred for a long time, and it's great that we're getting to it.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, for twenty thousand dollars, I think we got a good price.
Yeah, I agree. It's a project that really needs to be done. Lynn, yeah, the price seems great. Thank you for doing the diligence on this. I know I've walked that, and it, not only does it hold a lot of water, because there's so much muck in the bottom of it, it's breeding mosquitoes like crazy. I'm not sure that that'll eliminate it completely, but I think it will help if we have some outfall. It'll help the water moving. So, good job. Thanks.
Council?
Was Steve actually bidding on the same job?
Yes.
I'm just checking.
We had went out last, just to give you a little feedback, we'd went out to another company several months ago before we got to the point, had the permit and stuff, and they came back with some enormous thing like forty-five thousand. And I'm thinking, wait, man, there's no way. All we're doing is sucking mud out. So.
And cutting mangrove trees.
Well, that's the best part here.
Any other council comments? I'll open up to the citizens. There are no citizen comments. Back to counsel with Rhea Swolp with the last word.
Oh, I don't have anything to add. I have a whole question.
Okay. So what we're doing is we're going to author, this item 10, authorized to suspend bid requirements for outfall maintenance service. We are, we're going to authorize the city manager to contract with CNM dredging, Inc., in the amount of $19,170 for the project described in the binder here. Yes vote allows him to proceed. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero. Okay, item 11, consideration of a merit pay increase based on the annual evaluation criteria for the city manager. This is a merit increase based on city council employee evaluations, which were included in our binder. So first, do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Rhea Swolp. Second, second by Mark B.
Well, I just would like to say that we all received copies of everybody's evaluation. So we know the commentary, the system, and overall, we've done an absolutely amazing job.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor, I cannot.
Yeah, please, right into the microphone, council member Swolp, one inch away.
Lynn, you've done an absolutely amazing job, and we all received the evaluations that everybody filled out. So you've met the criteria to receive the 3% obviously by the score. So I say we go ahead and give you your merit increase of 3%.
Counsel, any other comments? Citizens? Back to coun, uh, got a thumbs up. Yeah, I think that's what the way we all feel. Back to Rhea Swolp, if there are any notes on councils, any comments you think you have any comments on?
No, I don't have anything else.
I'm gonna call the question. So this is authorization, I'm sorry, this is consideration of merit pay increase based on annual evaluation criteria for city manager, merit increase based on city council employee valuation. It doesn't say here, it's a 3% increase, I believe, is what we're talking about. Correct? Yes. Okay, so we take a voice vote on this. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Reeves. Excellent year.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Now for the tough one. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so number 12 is consideration of merit pay increase based on annual evaluation criteria for the city clerk. Bolt is a 3% increase, doesn't say it here, but it is. Merit increase based on city council employee evaluations, which we all have the copy. Do I have a motion?
So move.
That's a tie. I don't know who, is that you, Mark? Mark gets it. It's his last meeting. So Mark being Ben Reeves. Mark?
All right, I've looked at all evaluations. I've known Patty for a long time, 15 years. And this year especially, she's really done an enormous job keeping us all informed with COVID and whatever else have you. And any correspondence I ever had from her was 100% or full truth as it can be. And glad to see that everybody agrees across the board. That's all I have to say.
Patty, I had comments last time, and I just reiterate them. I think we nailed it on, and I saw a couple other, I can vice bear the same comment, up nailing it on these minutes and stuff, and then just being proactive. And I think it goes, I can say it for Librius, but I think it goes for both individuals. This was not, not that any year's an easy year, but this year was really a tough year with COVID, and it was all curveballs being thrown at us. Nobody knew what was going on, you know, coming next. And these two pretty much rolled with the punches, and that's all you can really ask. And we kept the city, I mean, you're hearing all this good stuff tonight, the projects that have never been done in 10 years, 15 years, well, they're getting done. So, and it's getting done by the council for these individuals. So I'm absolutely, totally in favor of your answer. Thank you. Good job. Anyone else? They guys?
Obviously, my comments speak for themselves, but I will add that I don't think that the same survey should be given for both Lynn and Patty. I struggle doing Patty's. There were just some questions that you kind of had to win to make it work. I think sometime this year, we should look into this and see if we can do a modified version that's specific to the clerk's position, because it's, this survey was definitely geared towards more the city manager and not the city clerk.
I agree. I mean, I struggle, there's some, some delegation and things. It's not, you know, it's two different jobs, but you get the gist of it, but we could maybe tailor some for that. We'll get in a work session. Clint?
I think one way of satisfactorily doing that is going back and adding more sections where it's just not observed. I mean, just, you feel compelled to give a number or answer in certain categories, but we don't observe those areas in the office and that zone. So, I mean, you know, now it doesn't say it, but we probably need to go back and change that form to include that and make sure that it's not, you know, using the average. And we shouldn't be compelled.
To date to your point and Lynn's point, I might suggest, you know, Lynn Reeves, you're seeing this, you're seeing every day what's happening, and you're not. And, you know, to the extent maybe that you could have some included, this might help too, you know, because we're not seeing it. You know, some, I come to headquarters once in a while, I know Lynn does and Mark doesn't. Some people don't get a chance to come here all the time. So, and even when we're here, we're only seeing 10, 15 minutes, half an hour, we're just sitting 40 hours a week. So it might help. You know, you can maybe just give us a little overview of what your take on things are. So maybe you can, this could be a nice work session thing to revolve this.
Could I just mention, I think Lynn, we used and we outsourced those reviews, the documents and so forth, where it makes sense that we maybe just take a blank one and say, you know, because I, there were areas, I think last year I looked back and I did what had not observed. You know, it's hard to have score because I don't have the firsthand knowledge. So maybe we just share that information, and Lynn, you could maybe have them redo the form.
Any other council comments?
The only thing that any of us can do is just our experience with a person individually. That's all we can do.
But I guess what happened, I mean, you know, some people, like, I work a lot with Patty, I'll see the different things, but some, you know, everybody doesn't, I try to impart some of it to what I say, but, you know, like, when she wrote a letter for me, I mean, that got that thing out the door, and I was stacked with work that week, and I didn't ask her, she just did it. And I mean, that's really being proactive. That's being excellent. And that's, that was impressive. I know I wrote it, and it's, I meant it, it's good. So, yeah.
It's the same thing. I mean, anytime I have any correspondence or anything, write on and call me back. Answers any question I have. And what more can we do but answer first, 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 last, what they, whatever you do.
Counsel, anything else? I'll open up to the citizens. Another thumbs up. Might be a little in jeopardy, Patty. I don't know. We'll see. I think you're gonna be a little bit there. Okay, any other, uh, council comments? Mark, you get the last word? Anything?
No others I can say about.
Call the question. Okay, so item 12, this consideration of merit pay, merit pay increase based on annual evaluation criteria for the city clerk. We're talking about a 3% merit increase based on the city council employee evaluations. I'll take a voice vote. A yes gives the 3% raise. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Patty, and thank you for getting a great year.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right, item 13 is unfinished business. Do we have any? Do you have something, Lynn? Or you want to pick it up in your?
I'll pick it up.
You got it. Well, City Attorney, Fred Riley. You've been very quiet tonight, Mr. Riley.
Yes, I have.
This is your time.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you. You got us a copy of the, what we had asked last time for the Madeira Beach ordinance on the boats. I haven't forgotten about it. I didn't want to bring ordinance stuff up with the council. This is the last business meeting for this council, so instead of voting once and voting a second time with different potential council, I will just push it all off. It can wait. I didn't see that many boats on our side, so I think we're pretty good. We may not even have to, but we'll bring it to the next work session. But thank you for getting us that information. Okay, Mr. Reeves?
Okay, I just want to, unfinished business, just give you an update on the Gulf Boulevard and Causeway traffic radar signs. I did speak to the county. They are in the works. They are doing, at the intersection, they're doing it, they have hired a consultant, they're doing an intersection study mainly to look at, is there a better way to get people on the island, like make two left turn lanes there where we can. I did speak to the consultant. It's been a couple weeks ago, and they're even looking at the island there, 12th Street. So those things are in, in the works. It just takes time. Bicycles, electric bicycles on the beach, the way the statute reads in the state about a bicycle, electric bicycle is a bicycle. So.
What I was told is correct, that is.
There's no, there's no enforcement with sheriff to do anything about electric bicycle. Now, if the city wanted to create ordinance that banned bicycles, then that would alleviate. But at this point, electric bicycles are a bicycle. And, you know, we may discuss that for a work session, what the council wants to do going forward.
Lynn, I just want to interject. I got a comment, I think maybe it said this to other people on council, but I got a comment from one of the citizens. Almost got run over by this. I responded, and it was exactly what, that's what I had heard at the Big C. All the mayors just, I think I said this last time, all the mayors at the Big C were complaining about this, and then it came to our town, of course. A bicycle is a bicycle, and an e-bike is a bicycle. So, thank you, State of Florida. We can't do anything about it short of probably banning them, unless Mr. Riley can pull up something, you know, another way around this thing. But I think this is going to be a topic for a work session down the road to see what our council wants to do. I hate to ban anything. And then you get that whole idea of what do you do with the let sand, potentially as State of Florida Trust for recreation. So I don't know. But I do know that when I'm getting complaints from residents that they're almost getting run over, that's not good, and somebody's going to get hurt, and I don't want that.
Okay, speaking of the boats in the intercoastal, the majority of them are crossed. They're not in our waters. Florida Fish and Wildlife, I did talk to them about it. They will enforce it. In other words, they'll enforce it if we catch someone staying longer than our ordinance allows. Our ordinance says you can be there 72 hours in a 30-day period. And as they told me, the problem is if that boat moves 100 feet, he's at a different place, so he's got another 72 hours technically. I know, Councilmember Bean, I asked him, because I, they've been trying to monitor and see if I saw any boats, and a couple days I talked to him, and there weren't any boats out there. But then last week, one night, there was a boat, but the next day it wasn't there. So I don't know if there's much control that we have over that. And I don't know if any of you other council members that live on the water have seen any other boats.
And I just suggest, and I think, I mentioned this to Lynn earlier today, I think that we should just, in our ordinance, especially now that we're reviewing our code, we should just say that there's no mooring allowed. And so that satisfies, that's our, that takes care of the ordinance issue. I don't see any need for anyone to moor, to moor their boat behind anyone's house within our jurisdiction. You know, I think if you have a boat that is in water and you have your dock, you know, being repaired, you need to moor it for a while, that's a special permit you come get from the city. Otherwise, no mooring in the city, period. And I think that that's something maybe, you know, we can address with the code review right now.
Right, that's, that's really a simple change. We just take the wording out that says 72 hours in a 30-day period and strike that and say no mooring.
Well, that ordinance that Madeira Beach passed is very successful. That got them out of Madeira Beach, and they're probably the ones that you see over here now, but they scattered after that. So it worked, and, you know, whatever we need to pull out of that to make it legal, and for Mr. Riley to give us the insight into it. But, I mean, I don't own water from property, but I sympathize with what Joni just said. I mean, the last thing in the world, I wanted some, you know, tying up this boat, or not tying up the anchore right in the backyard. I mean, you know, they can fish there if they want, but 72 hours, they become a house guest, and that's not good. That's too much.
Yeah, but are the buoys, would that be the separation outside, inside, or is it?
No, no, actually, our jurisdictional is basically the center of the intercoastal. So if you took the, went to the top of the bridge, to the highest point, and kind of stood in the middle there and looked down, that's the jurisdictional boundary of the city.
So far, I've seen one consistently, and it's a larger boat. There was a little sailboat for a while, and it's gone now. But fortunately, our neighbors across the way are, they must be paying attention, and they don't think it's cool to come over here yet. Definitely, if we can build a spot to get them all over.
I think we want to be, that's why I suggested last time, I think we should be proactive, not wait till they get here, because, you know, when they're in your backyard, it's not going to be fun anymore. And then, you know, it takes what, three months to get an ordinance, so at that best, if we're moving fast, so.
Well, this is a simple one. We can just do it. The Beach Eastman Project, the accesses, the four, is a about $100,000 project. They're done. I don't know if any of you have been to it. Well, I do know Councilmember Shirley has. And we're gonna now submit the invoice to the county, because they are going to pay $15,000 to us, so we can get that back.
Say 15 or 50?
50.
50, nice.
So we'll submit that invoice and get that process going to collect our, their share back, I guess is how I want to put it. So the project was very good, and I got a command. Kyle took care of it and worked on it, worked with the contractor, and I think he did a really good job. So it turned out well. House Bill 219, short-term rentals, we're not in that window at the current time. It's from 2014. I did listen into a quarterly cities webinar with the representative that's telling everybody, tell your people, talk to your representatives and tell them, both know through the 2014. So if you have any contact, that's the recommendation, but it doesn't really affect us. Couple months ago, I gave you the supplemental number of about $10,000, and I never heard from anybody for the supplemental sheriff. So I'm expecting to just go forward and start using that when I need to for certain holidays and stuff. But I shared that with you a couple months ago. And we did submit the letter to the Big C to get approval to expend the penny four money. I don't know what happened with it, because I checked, and I'm not sure if it's just done by the committee or the Big C itself.
I'm not sure. There was no real business this time. I'll talk, it's my turn, but there was, this time they had a special presentation, so there was very, very little business based handled.
And today, the mayor and I received a letter from FEMA, notice of the flood insurance map change effective August 24th, 2021. Over the summer, we'll probably be doing some ordinance changes and updates to comply. The maps have not been sent to us, but based on the preliminaries, some of the homes, BFE is going to drop. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think we'll need to be looking at that for the future. You know, we may have to add another foot of free board or something to keep everybody protected if they're building a new house.
Well, Lynn is talking about, when he talked about free board, is the difference between what they mandate you build your house up, and then if you want to add a little extra between your first floor. So I did my house, I did a foot and a half. A lot of people do, but some people don't do anything. So that's what he's talking about. But they're actually going to lower the minimum height, and they're also changing our zoning too. I mean, so my house used to be in the VE zone, and it's going to be in the A zone, which is really nice now, but it's stilts now, but that's okay.
Well, I, the county, we had a conference call today in the county, and all the cities are looking at a vulnerable study that the county did, because the map study actually was started in 2012. So. So, we're nine years past that, and they're just adopting the maps. So, it may help with flood insurance for some people, but we can always go to higher standards and elevate to a higher level by using something like freeboard or something like that. So, that's something we'll be discussing over the summer. And I want to thank Patty for all the work she did on the communication survey. She probably thought I was getting crabby, because I kept telling her, what have we done, what have we done? She, she got it together, and she sent out her first newsletter last week. So, the newsletter you got in the mail, and it's from the new list. They'll open the list, we did print it off and put it in the public records, but we're not gonna use that anymore. So, anything we sent out now, it's pretty much been confirmed that these are our residents' land property owners. So, and, you know, I think the communications committee assisted us in going forward, but Patty did a great job, and I really appreciate it. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager? Hey, the city clerk?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to city council comments, and start with Rhys Gold.
I don't have anything additional to add.
Tony Shirley?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Dave Gaddis?
Uh, not tonight, thank you.
For the last time, Mark Beam.
Okay, if you look in your packet under section seventeen, this information came from the Big C, Edge Water Resources is a company that the Big C was, had the presentation that the mayor elaborated on it. But the company does marinas on the oceanfront, and they also do, you know, areas where the beach is gonna be protected. So, if you look at some of the pictures that are, they get ideas to keep sand from eroding. So, maybe in the future, in a work session, we talk about doing something with the marina, and I talked to Lynn, and there's seventeen people with smaller boats on a waiting list, so maybe this company can come up with a concept that the council agrees. And when we do beach re-nourishment again, if you see on page three the information, they've got little winged areas, and it kind of looks like a bunch of curbs. It's possible we could do that, do that type of thing in the, in our beach area from Twenty-first to north, maybe in different sections like that. And when we do the, bring the sand in, it might stay by doing a few things like this. I don't know, but I think it's worthwhile if the council looks into it in the future, and maybe get these people to attend the, kind of workshop and talk about it, see if they can come up with helping us keep the sand on the beach. I recently sent a picture to Lynn Reeves from nineteen eighty-eight, and it shows about five foot of water or sand in front of the Nineteenth Street access. So, if you're interested, how it looked, or how it looked back then, you can ask for a picture, I'll send it. That's all I had.
Thank you. Robin, on you.
I don't have anything except to thank Mark for all his years of service in the past, and it's been an honor to be on the council with you, and I'm missing you, I'm hoping you'll come to meetings.
Vice Mayor?
Best practices, the agenda summary, I would ask that we include a little more specificity again, I've talked about that before. For instance, just going back to item nine, the purchase orders were the ask called over, right? I think if we just had added some more verbiage saying, hey, you know, the original contract was for this much, the amendment is actually for only fifteen thousand dollars for these reasons, we could have probably saved a lot of negative discussion there. And really, some of these other ones were along the same line, if we, you know, what went, how they're who, kind of thing, if we just, a couple bullets could save a lot of discussion and save a lot of time on some of these things, and actually facilitate business and save time on some of these things. Again, here, and actually, I don't come out of the code review thing, the mooring issue and the bicycle thing. I mean, if bicycles are a thing, and I don't, I don't have any skin in this, but I'm just saying, now's the time, you could go back into that ordinance and say, specify, hey, a man-powered bicycle, or excluding self-propelled stuff. If there's an issue of mooring that you want to restrict it or constrain it, now's the time to do it. Just heard Longishweer saying they're in the home stretch here, and if we want to make some changes, I think we need to give them that direction. So, I don't know if the city manager has that for action?
Yeah, that's, oops.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have that discussion. Just keep in mind to that point that it was, we're preemptive on what we, the legislature said, a bicycle's an e-bike, so if we, I think it boils down to ban entirely, and that's gonna come down to the council, you know, so I think we're kind of hand-tuffed on this one. Either we ban entirely, and we still have to deal with that wet sand issue, and I'm not even sure what the law is on that, or we have to let it go, and then the state... I think so, yeah, I think so, and I want to...
And the last thing is, so far as the survey goes, I mean, okay, we got three hundred and twenty-one responses out of twelve hundred and thirty-four residences, and, you know, we're saying, hey, that's twenty-five, twenty-six percent, and even by normal surveys, again, that's good. But depending on how you break down and drill down into those numbers, I mean, if you consider the number of homestead homes and that sort of thing, that number's probably even higher towards fifty percent. So, good job, and good job getting that stuff done. So, I mean, it's just a matter of how you look at it. That's all I need, thank you.
I had a couple of things. First, I, one of the citizen comments that had come directly today was about the dogs on the beach, and I wrote back also saying that we have, and I spoke with the city manager too on this, we have a little bit of a problem on the dogs on the beach issue, because we don't, the sheriff is very limited in terms of the questions they can ask with the, whether your dog is a service dog or not. They're not allowed to ask for proof, so they almost have to take the person at their word, yeah, it's a service dog. And maybe it doesn't look right, maybe it doesn't smell right, but they're limited in terms of their questions. So, if we, you know, we can call the sheriff, but I think this comes to one of those things that unless we start changing around our deployment of police personnel, it gets difficult for them to control the beach and control our city. So, we have some supplemental, if it becomes a problem, maybe that's something we can kind of target, or put somebody undercover there and see what they see. But we are somewhat limited when it comes to this dog issue, and that's, again, thank you Tallahassee, the sheriff can ask like two questions, and that's it. So, I'm not gonna say what they are, but it's very limited. So, that's what the dogs on the beach issue is. I touched on the beach access points, I'm just gonna remind, Mr. Reeves and I had a nice, really nice conversation about this, just, you know, be vigilant with the police, just keep it reminded, because I'm starting to see it come in again, and that's, I think, created the friction point last year with us in Bella Shore, and these people don't respect other people's property rights, not the people coming in here, you know, our residents do, but, you know, some of the outsiders really don't. Mark Beam hit on the presentation, it was an hour's presentation from this Edge Water Resources, and what they do is, they look for alternatives. Instead of just dumping sand back on the beach in this re-nourishment process, then you put it on, it blows away, and it gets washed away, and you put more. They actually make it so that nature takes its course by them altering nature by putting up these different little mini islands and things like this. It's a very engineered process. I liked what I heard until we got to the point of the price, and the price was like nineteen million dollars to do like a mile. And I'm like, okay, that's great, that's, and by the way, these are 2015 numbers. So, I heard that, and I said, well, that's great, but that would be, what, ten years worth of budgets for us? So, you need help. If we're gonna do this, we would have to get, if there's federal grants available or something like that, that's great. If we can work it with another city or something, that's great, but I don't even know for Bella Beach to do our little section beach, and if Bella Shore's not doing anything, I don't know if we accomplish anything. They do have some nice stuff with the marina, I was looking at what they did in one of the east, east coast cities in Florida, and I mean, it looked like the marina was much bigger than ours, but the layout, the way they had boats, I mean, there was a lot more boats over there. So, I think that has some possibilities, because that we could generate revenue with. But I just want you to know that, I mean, I like everything I've heard with these folks, and they're doing stuff that nobody else is doing, but that price was a killer, and that was the problem. The Lynn Reeves hit on the, this housing bill, the short-term rentals, keep an eye on it, right now it wouldn't affect us, but that doesn't mean it can't change. The other thing out there, and I haven't read a lot into this, but we had a discussion also about this whole idea of this home-based business thing, and it's not just professional businesses, I think Tallahassee's thinking about, well, you can do any business you want from your house. Well, that's not what we want in Bella Beach. So, keep an eye on that bill and see where it's going. I will tell you this, I also went to Suncoast League of Cities, and I kind of go there once in a while, not all the time. Their priorities aren't necessarily our priorities, so if we see, this legislative session starts up in a couple of days, if we're seeing stuff we don't like, then it's up to us to get in touch with these legislators, because like Suncoast, their priorities, like they're gonna go line item on the short-term rentals. They're not even opposing the whole thing, they said just make line item changes. So, they're putting acquiescing on, yeah, we'll give it to you, that we're gonna make change in the short term, just make line item changes. So, we're kind of gonna be on our own. Watch that year, right now it doesn't affect us, but it's really easy for someone to change that year, and then, what's our year, Lynn, 2011?
Two thousand and eleven.
Eleven, yeah, so if they change to two thousand and eleven, then it does affect us. As for this home-based business thing, look, I've got no problem with a professional working from their house, I don't even care if they see a plant now and then, but I do care if there's an auto body shop next to me, or a, you know, anything else. I've had first time, firsthand experience with this, and first house that I ever lived, and the lady had a hairdressing salon, and it went from one chair to three chairs, and the whole street was filled with people, and it's just not what you want in your neighborhood. So, we gotta keep an eye on that one. Other than that, we have an election coming up, and I just want to encourage everybody to vote. Heard stuff tonight, if you like what you hear, go to the polls. If you don't like what you hear, go to the polls, but go to the polls, because it doesn't get done on social media, it gets done at the polls. With that said, one person who knows not coming back is Mark Beam. Mark, I'll say the real nice words for next time, but I just want to tell you, it has been an honor to serve with you. You are an epitome of what it means to be a council member and professionalism here, and this city has had eight, six years of your hard work, and I thank you, it has been a pleasure working with you, and I hope to see you a lot when you're not out enjoying yourself in well-earned retirement here.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's all I have, folks. With that said, somebody give me a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna make Mark make it, and go ahead and go and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.